Oh, good evening and welcome to the Smyrna Town Council meeting for our May meeting. And tonight, before we move into our actual meeting, we have two presentations. Our first is our Captain Jeff Koos USMC Memorial Scholarship Announcement and Update. And I'm going to ask Kelly Goose Tree to come to the podium to talk a little bit about our scholarship. Kelly chairs that committee. And just to let you know, myself, Kelly, John Black, who used to be with the airport, Gary Winton, who is with Motlow, and then Landy, who is with the Blue Angels, is here with us. And Landy, are you in Pensacola tonight?
I am, yes.
He's in Pensacola. And Janet Koos, Jeff's mom, is in. Janet, are we in Durango tonight?
We sure are.
Great. So they have been part of the scholarship committee since it's gotten started. So Kelly, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just have to say what a pleasure it is to start on this committee with all these people that care so much about our community, and especially Janet and Landy, that have been so committed since the beginning. And thank you, Mayor, for your foresight as a former educator to put value on scholarships and helping kids further their education. It means so much to this community, and it pays dividends for a long time. So thank you for being at the head of that. We had a great group of kids this year. We had 21 students who applied for our scholarship up from last year. And the candidates were amazing. I would be honored to award any of them with a scholarship right now, this evening. But we had the task of picking the three that we gave the money to this year. And it's $6,000 for Jeff's number six, and it's $2,000 a student. So we had just wonderful candidates. I was so proud of them as a former educator. I'm retired this year. But it makes me feel really good to think about kids growing up in this community that have such giving hearts and so intelligent. And I think it's a time where we can all look at young people and kind of say, well, do they still have focus? Do they still have direction? Let me tell you, they do. We are very impressed with the ones that we've talked to this year. And so we had three that we awarded this year. Two of them are graduating this evening, so they couldn't be here tonight. So we went to their schools and awarded them their check and surprised them. And it was wonderful. And two of them were from Stewart's Creek. And the first was Dawson Binder. And Dawson was a great candidate that we had. And he was a band kid. And he's going into actuarial science. And I'm hoping next year when I follow up, he'll tell me what that is. And I'll come back and tell you all. But he's a smart kid, math kid and science kid. He was also in the band. And that was actually a connection that he had. When we asked him the question, why did you apply for this scholarship? He shared with us that the commitment and honor that went along with the armed forces was one of the questions we asked him in the application. And he felt like his commitment to the band, if you all know much about band, said a lot about made a connection. And he felt like he wanted to honor that and carry it forward. So I was very proud of him. And another is Broly Walker. And Broly is Stewart's Creek student graduating this evening. Congratulations. And she's going to Lipscomb University. And oh, I'm sorry. Let me tell that Dawson is going to UT Martin. So I want to be sure I say where he's going to school. But Broly's going to Lipscomb. And she's going to be a theater major, theater education major. And she actually wants to write her own shows one day. She's been heavily into theater all through school and has been in many performances and performances outside of school as well. So she's going to use that talent to go back into the schools and follow in her mother's footsteps, who has been a kindergarten and preschool teacher, actually worked for me at one time. And she's going to have a great support system to do that and serve this community as well. So we're proud of her.
Broly was really cute. When we went to present, that day was the day that we were honoring the students that were going to be going into the military at Stewart's Creek. And they do that every year. Any kid that is going into the military, they recognize them. And poor thing, she thought she was in trouble because she had been called down to the front. And so she was so worried she was in trouble that day. She didn't realize it was because she'd gotten the scholarship.
That's right. That's probably, that's why she wasn't elementary school. And she's still like that. And the last student for this year is Evers Frank. He's a Central student. And he's going to go to Union University. His sister's there. I think she's going to be a junior this year. So it's kind of going to be a family thing there at Union. And he is in mechanical engineering. And when we asked him why he wanted to apply for this scholarship in particular, he said it was to go to school without debt. So as a young man, he already has the foresight to say, I don't want to graduate school owing a lot of money. So that was great that he did that. Wonderful student. Thank you, Dr. Ash at Central, who helped us surprise him. And Dr. Harold at Stewart's Creek. And they helped us award those students. And there's the pictures there. And it's nothing like, you know, handing a big six-foot check to somebody. They kind of enjoyed that. It was great. And they were, Landy and Janet were with us, just like they are this evening. So they got to speak to them. And it means so much to them. They were very touched by that. And then I wanted to let you know about our last year's students. We had them in last year and gave three students the awards. And so I wanted to kind of fill you in on an update on them. I had a wonderful phone call with all three of them. It's kind of, you're filled with a little trepidation to call your last year's people and say, I hope you're all still like on track. And they were. So I wanted to share with you some of the things they said to me. So Emma Gray was one of our students from last year from Central as well. She's at UT Knoxville. And Emma majors in civil engineering. And she's actually doing an internship here for the town of Smyrna this summer. And it's geographic information systems. Again, something she'll come back and explain to me about what that's about. But I did ask her what she's going to be working on there. And she said roadmapping of stormwater. Sounds like something, Mayor, we need to be paying attention to.
That's right.
She might keep us out of trouble or something.
Especially the UT Knoxville student.
Well, call Emma. She's on it. So she's going to help us. And I asked her what she'd learned this year, that maybe not academic, just something that she took in this year to grow from. And she said that she learned to be more independent. She had the opportunity to, you know, keep her own schedule and set her classes and juggle all of her tasks. And she was able to do that. And so that built some confidence in her, knowing that she's up for the task. She's all lined up for the fall. And we're looking forward to seeing what she does. And Sherilyn Morales Navore was one of our other students from last year. She's at MTSU. She's an engineering and mechatronics major. I actually called her while she was studying for her last final. And she let me interrupt her for a few minutes. I think she was glad for the break. But she was, you know, when she entered MTSU, because of the dual enrollment, she already had an associate's degree when she got to school. So she's heavily into her major already, which is wonderful, because that's the exciting part, when you start really, you know, studying what you're going to be doing in life. So she's looking forward to this fall. Again, she doesn't really have concrete plans. So if you need a dog sitter or babysitter or something, Sherilyn wants to work for you this summer. And I asked her what she would like to share with the committee. And she said, of course, you know, thank you so much for helping her to, you know, to apply this to her debt, going to school. But the one thing she really liked, Amber, Mayor, was the backpack.
Oh, good.
She said, please tell them that this backpack was like, I've had a lot of backpacks. This one went through a freshman workout, and it had pockets everywhere I needed it to be. And it helped me keep organized. And I thought that was such a sweet share. So that's something you'd always hear. So thank you, Sherilyn, for letting us know about that. Carlos Leon was our last recipient last year. He goes to Lincoln Tech. And he's in auto mechanics. And he's scheduled to graduate in September. And that part of their program is that they bring recruiters in, and they talk to you and do job fairs and try to match you up with a job that would be, you know, perfect for you. So he's going to graduate with seven certifications. He can work on almost any car. And he's already, I know, isn't that cool? And he's already talked to some recruiters that are looking at him to join a major organization that has over 1,300 locations. So hopefully, he'll be able to find something local because he wants to live here. And his goal is to, one day still, to build his own business and use his skills there. And he has one day off from now till September, other than the weekends, since 4th of July. So I think in honor of him having some liberty that day, we should send a firework off or something for him that day. But he said that the reason, one of the reasons he applied was just, you know, again, helping the financial strain on his family to go to school. So that was, that's just a wonderful thing. We honored all these students last year and again this year. And we just can't say how proud we are of them. It's just been such a meaningful thing to connect with them and to be inspired and encouraged by them. And that's what I want to tell all the young people applying for this, is that you are inspiring to us. There were several things we took away. In fact, Evers said something to us at the end of his application, or his interview, that people can look around and see problems and see issues that need to be addressed. But nothing changes unless you do something. And that really resonated with our committee, as just an 18-year-old kid who's just starting out, to realize the importance of one man taking action on something. So I would encourage all the students to apply for that. Thank you so much to the committee for your tireless work on this. And I know this is such a happy thing to work on. So I'm honored and grateful to be a part of it as well. So you're all kind of...
So a couple of things. Obviously, in addition to the $2,000, we provide them a backpack that they can take to school with them. But this year, Landy and the Blue Angels stepped up. And each one of our recipients this year, as well as the three from last year, got friends and family passes that not only can be used at the airshow here in Smyrna, but anywhere across the country that the Blues are flying. So it was a really cool addition to what they're already getting. So Landy, kudos to you and the Blues for taking care of that. And Landy, I guess we're going to be seeing you in a few weeks?
Yes, ma'am.
Great. Landy or Janet, anything that you guys would like to add?
Like, I don't know what to say. It was such an honor to be on this committee. And just listening to all these students was, it's so refreshing and so rewarding to hear about their stories and their hopes and dreams. And thank you so much for letting me be on this committee. It's just an honor. So thank you from Durango, Colorado.
Well, Janet, I think you know, we consider you part of our community. And we've had lots of discussions about how important education was to Jeff. And so we're just glad to be able to carry on his name through this scholarship.
It's wonderful. Thank you.
Landy, anything else from you?
Like Janet said, I am humbled to be a part of this committee with such fantastic people, with great young people to interview. So talented, so smart, unbelievable. I'm looking forward to coming up and meeting everybody I haven't met up there here in a few weeks with the team. Just humbled to be here. And thank you so much for allowing me to be on this committee.
Do they have some really cool tricks that they're going to be sharing with us in a few weeks?
Right.
The last thing that I have, one of the things, Landy already has this. As a matter of fact, if he probably shoots behind him, you'll be able to see it. But one of the things Kelly said that she didn't have was a print. And so let me come around. So Amber has taken care of you with this. But Landy has a Blue Angels room. And so his print is, there you go, it's right there behind him. But we wanted, with all the hard work that you put in, we just wanted to make sure that you also have this print.
Ma'am, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
I love it. You just keep giving. Wait, the first year we were in this, you gave us the plane. And I just cherish it. I almost left it at school. I had it in a case outside the trophy case. And I remembered it at the 11th hour when I was leaving. I said, that's mine. But this is just so beautiful. Landy, thank you for all the beautiful, all the wonderful things that you've given over the time. But that is so gorgeous. And this is just, this is so near and dear to my heart, Janet, from day one. This has just meant so much to me to be a part of this committee. And I'm just so grateful to be working with you as well. And it's just an honor to keep up with you and to know that we're, I remember you telling in the very beginning how important it was, you know, Jeff with education. He cared so much about that. It was next to flying. It was his favorite day, when he got to go to schools and talk to people and inspire young people. So it means so much to us to see that vision coming to fruition in his memory and his honor. So thank you again.
And the Top Gun Night Run will be coming up in September. And there's so many people that I look around this room that were such a huge part. Jerome, you were from day one in making sure that the memorial was done. And the Top Gun Night Run is the way that we're able to fund the upkeep of the memorial, but also to fund the scholarship. So if you've not gotten signed up for the run or walk, you don't have to run it, we encourage you to do that. But thank you for all you're doing for us. Thank you. Thanks, Landy. Thanks, Janet. Okay, next, we have some other guests that are here with us. Evan Lester, who is our new executive director of the Smyrna Rutherford County Airport Authority.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. So he's going to give us an update on the airport, the National Guard relocation, and the 2025 airshow. So I hope we didn't steal any of your thunder.
And it's okay.
Okay, great.
It's okay if you did. It just gives you a little head start.
That's right, that's right.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Town Council, for allowing me to be here today to give you an update on all the things that are ongoing at the airport and things that we have upcoming for the future. And it's like, I'm not connected on my slide here.
Isn't technology wonderful?
Oh, it's great. I can go off script if I need to real quick and do a little song and dance. No.
Todd, are they booting, he's hooking it up? Okay.
Just a little stretch it out a little bit.
Oh, I see. That's what you were telling me, stretching it out to give him a minute. Okay, I couldn't understand the sign language.
I thought you needed a party break. I didn't know what you were doing.
So Evan, tell them a little bit about you and how long you've been with the airport.
Sure. So a little bit about myself. I've lived here for eight years in the town of Smyrna with my wife and two kids. We're raising our two kids here. Love the town ever since I've moved here. I'm originally from Columbia, Tennessee. I lived there my whole life. Went to MTSU, got my bachelor's science degree in aerospace, and then also my master's degree in aerospace as well in MTSU. I went to work for the Tennessee Department of Transportation Aeronautics Division. Not a lot of people know that there's an aeronautics division within TDOT. But I worked there as the airport planning and environmental manager for all the 77 general aviation airports and commercial service airports across the state.
They're with your land.
But that's where I worked for the last seven years, coming from the airport. And so hopefully, some of the experience that I've gained working for the state, interacting with the Federal Aviation Administration, will hopefully prove beneficial to the airport and the town and also the county. So really blessed to be here, really happy that the Airport Authority selected me to be the new director at the airport, and really excited to be here. While we're waiting, I do want to introduce our vice chairman, Mr. Paul Lambs, in the room here with us. He is representing the town of Smyrna. And our deputy director, Mr. Slilri. So couldn't do it without these two gentlemen and all the Airport Authority and the airport team that we have there. So.
Great. And I think we're booted up now.
Perfect. Good deal. So a little bit about the airport, just kind of give some background and context. We are what's called an FA Part 139 Certificated Airport, which means we have to uphold the highest safety and quality standards at the airport. We're only one of eight airports across the state of Tennessee to have that certification. Five of them are those commercial service airports. And we're the only one in Mill Tennessee between Millington or Jackson area, all the way to East Tennessee. So we're really proud of that. We have two runways, one that's 8,038 foot long, which can land anything up to a Boeing 747 aircraft, and a 5,500-foot runway. All right, airport encompasses 1,700 acres, making us the third largest in terms of land size in the state of Tennessee. Last year, we had a record fuel sale. We sold over 2 and 1/2 million gallons of fuel on the airport. And we had 120,000 operations last year. And we have that about annually. One thing that makes us strategic as an airport is about 70% of the U.S. population can be reached within 600 miles of our airport, which, depending on the aircraft size, can get you anywhere in a matter of hours or minutes. And so this is a little slide right here. This was a culmination of about 12 months of aircraft data. And as you can see on the screen, pretty much you can get anywhere from our airport in the entire country. The only states that are not highlighted here are Nevada, for some reason, and then also Alaska and Hawaii. So those are the only states that, for some reason, no one flew from our airport there. But this kind of gives you a little tidbit on why our airport is strategically located. But it's also good for business as well. And so I talked about a number of operations. Being 120,000 annual operations, we are the fourth busiest in the entire state of Tennessee, after Nashville, Memphis, Knoxville. And we are also busier than Chattanooga Tri-Cities combined, if you combine them together. So we have a lot going on at the airport. But also, we have a lot of business development as well. So we have a lot of recreational personal users, but we also mean business. And what I mean by business is the economic opportunities that our airport provides. And so since 1991, when the Smyrna Rutherford County Airport Authority took over the airport, we've had over $245 million worth of investment and improvements into the airport. And we currently have over 51 businesses on the field, and we are 100% full. And so just some highlights of our businesses, because we like to acknowledge some of the business and economic impact our airport has. Some of those include Contour Airlines, which has their headquarters and maintenance facility located on the field. We have two fixed base operators that provide aircraft services and fueling, which are Hollingshead Aviation and Azure. Stevens Aerospace and the Fence is probably our newest development. And so they do a lot of aircraft maintenance and interior. And then we also have four industrial warehouses on our airport business park. And in those warehouses, some of the companies include NFI, Frankie, and Hunter Fan. And so we're proud of all these businesses on our field, not just these, but all of them, as they employ hundreds of people within our community and within our county, and provide greater opportunities for economic impact. And so talking about economic impact, it's sometimes hard to quantify. But TDOT Aeronautics Division did an economic impact study several years ago. And in that economic impact study, the airport directly and indirectly helps support over 1,500 jobs, over $92 million of payroll, and then over $232 million of economic impact to the town, the county, and the state annually. And that's an annual number. So we do provide a lot of economic impact for this airport and the community. But we look for also more opportunities to continue to grow for the community and provide more jobs as well. And so upcoming, we have what's called our tax-away K3 development area. This is on our west side of the airport, past the terminal and near Stevens Aerospace. And in this development area, we have enough funding to make at least 10 acres available for development. And we're currently working with the Tennessee Economic and Community Development, along with TBA, for additional funding to make this whole 40-acre site available, site prep, market ready for future business development. So we're really excited about this. And I would be remiss if, not only do we look for business development, but we also look for other types of development as well. And so when we look at other types of development, we talk about our past. Why is this airport here? Why was this originally built? And as we all know, Smyrna Airport was originally Stewart Air Force Base, Smyrna Army Airfield and Stewart Air Force Base, where it trained the B-17, the B-24 type aircraft for World War II purposes. And so that's why we're excited about the future of that situation. And so we are happy to say that the Tennessee Air and Army National Guard have selected Smyrna Airport as their new relocated site, to move from Nashville International Airport to Smyrna Airport. And this is sort of just a general layout. This is not set in stone. But this is kind of a conceptual plan of what the National Guard would like to do. In order to enable this relocation, the airport does have to sell a small bit of property to them. And we're currently working through that right now with the Federal Aviation Administration and the TDOT Aeronautics Division. So we're very proud of that. But not only are we proud of for them to come back to the airport, we're also proud of the economic impact that they'll have. And so we're seeing through some of the studies that they completed about a $1.93 billion economic impact to the town, the county, over the next eight years as they relocate to the Smyrna Airport. And that's through capital expenditures, but also through their operations. They'll also have 1,100 guardsmen on drill weekends, coming through the town and the county, which even provides even more economic impact to our businesses, our shops, our fast food chains, et cetera. So we're really excited about that upcoming for the airport. But not only do we care about economic impact and businesses, we also make sure that our airport is in tip-top shape. And so we recently completed a full reconstruction of runway 119. And that's a picture of opening day. On April 11th, we reopened it after 13 months. But the cool thing was, this was the first time this runway had been reconstructed in its entirety since it was built during Stewart Air Force Base days. And so it was a $13 million project that the state of Tennessee, through TDOT Aeronautics Division funded. And we're really proud to reopen that. And it's very smooth and great operation. But other projects we have upcoming, we have our main runway, runway 1432, kind of shown in red there. I think the slide kind of got mixed up. Sorry about that. But our main runway, 1432, will be going through a reconstruction. That's our main 8,038-foot runway. Again, the FA and TDOT Aeronautics are helping us fund that project. We also have a taxway called Taxway A or Alpha. We're also reconstructing that and relocating that just a little bit south on our airfield due to safety purposes. And then also, we're trying to secure funding for a new air traffic control tower. As you may all have seen about modernization of air traffic control, we hope our air traffic control is on top of that list, because this air traffic control tower is 71 years old. And it's really in need of a replacement. And so we're hoping to work with state and federal and all local officials to help us try to secure some additional funding for our new air traffic control tower. We are current, we just had our site visit by our FA National Coordinator for the signing study. We'll know the location of the new air traffic control tower by August. And then we'll be going through design. And we have some design money as well set aside to do the design. So really, we're trying to secure some additional funding for that construction. And then finally, we want to be a good community partner and engage the community. And so since I've been at the airport, we've had several tours with elementary schools and middle schools through our airport. And it's just great to have kids out to the airport to learn about aviation and learn about the airport, learn what we do. And so these are some of the pictures that were there when they were present at the airport and coming for a site visit. But also, in other events that we have coming up, we have the Wings of Freedom Fish Fry and Classic Car Cruisin'. That's hosted by the Rotary International Club. That will be held on Saturday, September 13th. So there's the website there if anybody would like to buy tickets to attend. But this one's really unique. Unfortunately, with the passing away Ms. Carolyn Peeble, she was not able to present on this information here. But we're going to continue to honor her legacy by having the Tuskegee Airmen Exhibit come to the Smyrna Airport. And so this is a picture of their mobile trailer. This is going to be out in our airport parking lot. So any school field trips that want to be had, anybody from the community, free of charge, can come to this mobile exhibit here. There's also a short film inside that mobile trailer that people can come and see. And then the aircraft that you see in the top left of that screen will be at the Wings of Freedom Fish Fry. So we're very excited to have that. So that's coming up. And what's really cool about this event is that all the proceeds go back to the community. And so whether it be the Boys and Girls Club, the Senior Activity Center of Smyrna, the Fisher House, or Habitat for Humanity, there's many more that's not on the screen. But we're able to give back to the community. And that's one way we're able to do the playground that's at the park now today. And then I would be remiss if I didn't talk about this. I think this is a hot topic of the day. But the Great Tennessee Airshow is coming on June 7th and 8th. The U.S. Navy Blue Angels will be headlining the show. And really excited to have them back here. We're going to have not only the Blue Angels, we're going to have an F-35 demo team, F-18, DC-3, a ton of other aircraft that are coming to the airport. We're expecting about 25,000 people each day. Ticket sales are out the roof. So if you want to buy a ticket, now's the time. GreatTennesseeAirshow.com. Make sure to secure that ticket. But it's a great event. And we've been doing this for over 50 years now in this community. And I'm proud to be a part of this through the planning effort and helping, which John Black is also helping with this event. And Airport Authority and all the airport team are really doing a great job putting this event together. And very excited about them coming back on June 7th and 8th. So really looking forward to that. But in short, our mission is to make sure that we provide a world-class airport, that we provide a great community, the front door to our community, promote our existing businesses, and also recruit them to the town and the county. And hopefully, through our efforts, we're able to make this airport just very successful and a great place to be and a community asset. So with that, I thank you for your time. Y'all have been absolutely great to work with. And just thank you all for supporting me in this new role. Y'all have been nothing but gracious ever since I've got the new role. So thank you all very much for your time and support. And I'm happy answering questions.
Questions for Evan?
Just a quick question. When you mentioned reconstruction of a runway, what's involved in that? It's just not black topic.
Now, there's one of, two-thirds of it will be fully dug out and replaced. And one-third of it will be rehabilitated. So it's going to take a lot of effort. The project's going to cost anywhere between 30 to 40 million. But the FA and TDOT Aeronautics Division are helping us fund that project.
You said the smaller runway took 13 months. How long will the bigger one be down? And how does that affect operations?
Sure. Great question. So the first phase, we'll be able to keep one runway fully open. So that won't impact too many operations. It will impact some of the heavier ones, the larger ones. But we'll be able to keep one runway open. But we'll be able to keep one runway open. That one will probably be a six-month construction time for the first phase. The second phase will be about another four to six months, depending on weather conditions. That part, that second phase does include a small portion where we would have to shut down for six to eight weeks, the whole airport, to do the center section. But we're going to make sure that T-Dot and the FA know how important it is to keep that project moving so we can reopen.
I have a comment. This young man here, having last year, he's done a great job filling in for John. And, you know, the first thing I gave him some advice is just don't mess it up. But he presents himself very well. And kind of the fact a lot of people don't know is he married Lionel Hodge's granddaughter. And so he, Mr. Hodge is definitely dialed in, or was dialed in, in the community. So I just appreciate everything you guys are doing.
Thank you.
Well, and his mother-in-law was a lot of our teachers or cheerleading sponsors, so, yeah. Evan, we appreciate you coming and giving us an update. I think sometimes the airport is forgotten about how much of a hidden jewel it is here in our town, but also such a huge economic driver for our community. And it absolutely helps to bring in business and industry. So we appreciate you guys, and thanks for the update. And we'll see you in a couple of weeks out there.
Absolutely. Thank y'all very much.
So thank you. Evan, y'all are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you would like, but you don't have to, okay?
Paul's already getting up.
That's right. Don't let Paul knock you over. Getting out the door. So we will now move into our meeting agenda. And Amber, are there any public comments tonight? Okay, no public comments. And so Amber, I will call the meeting to order. And tonight, Chaplain Tim York from the Smyrna Police Department is going to do our prayer. And our pledge is going to be done by Chief Jason Urban with the Smyrna Police Department. So if you'll stand with us, please.
Our Father, we're reminded tonight of how you have blessed this community in the past. And Lord, how you bless us in the present is amazing, and we look forward to the future. We're thankful for every employee who serves this town. Thank you, Father, for those who serve, some in harm's way, others who faithfully, daily practice helping and aiding the citizens of this city. Father, we pray you'll bless the council. We pray you'll give them wisdom. Help all of us to be reminded again that you taught us to love one another and to love you. And may we be good neighbors, and may we help each other, and may we strengthen each other. And we ask you, Lord, to give wisdom this evening. In your name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tim. And Jason? Ms. Amber, if you'll do roll call, please.
Yes, ma'am. Councilman Dempsey?
Present.
Councilwoman Peebles?
Here.
Councilman Cole?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Short?
Here.
Councilman Sullivan?
Here.
Vice Mayor Atkins?
Here.
Mayor Reed?
Here.
We'll move on to item four, which is approval or corrections of the minutes of the April 7th, 2025 council retreat special call meeting, the April 8th, 2025 regular council meeting, the April 24th, 2025 joint special call meeting between the Planning Commission and Council, and the April 24th, 2025 workshop meeting of the Town Council. Are there any additions or corrections that need to be made to these?
I just have a comment, Mayor. I think I discussed this with the Town Manager. We're keeping meeting minutes of the joint council on the PC meeting, correct? Video, not videotape, but audio of that, or?
No, state law?
No, I don't believe, we are keeping, no. We're not keeping video recording or audio of that joint meeting.
Okay.
State law, unless we're taking an action on an item. Amber, do you want to talk a little bit about what's required?
It's a notice meeting, a publicized, open, noticed meeting. But there are no...
So there's no actual meeting minutes on that meeting?
There's meeting minutes, which you'll be approving tonight. But there's no recorded audio or visual.
Okay, okay. And I'm not trying to catch change by heart, Scott. I'm just asking the question.
But we are following state law with that.
Yeah.
Okay, so with no additions or corrections, do I have a motion?
Move to approve the minute.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Minutes pass. Any correspondence or communications tonight, Amber or Dave? Okay. We did have an award, a recognition tonight, but I think Teresa is ill. And so we're going to postpone that till another meeting. So any other awards or recognitions? Okay, so we'll now move on to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda are items that are determined by our Town Manager to be routine matters and not necessarily needing individual discussion. I do like to read these off individually so that those on TV, as well as those here in the audience, know exactly what we are voting on. You're going to have to bear with me tonight, because we have quite a few. So first is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the sublease of a portion of the Sharp Springs to Greg Rhodes Farms for wildlife and agricultural purposes. Item B is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Azteca Systems to move the City Works application to a hosted platform. Item C is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a purchase of goods and services from Waypoint Business Solutions in support of our grant-funded multi-factor authentication project. Item D is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an extension of the contract with BH Homes Construction for emergency line repair, replacement, and water sewer maintenance. Item E is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a three-year renewal agreement with Rockwell Automation for technical support for the water plant. Item F is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with NAFCO for the purchase of bunker boots, turnout coats, turnout pants, suspenders, and fire hoods. Item G is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with CMS uniforms for the purchase of fire department uniforms. Item H is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Safe Industries for the purchase of fire gloves and fire helmets. Item I is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute supplement number one from Reagan Smith Associates Incorporated for professional services for the final design of the Lowry Street Phase Two project. Item J is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an extension agreement with Wayne's Pest Control till June 30th of 2026. Item K is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract extension with Neil Schaefer for the additional time on the ITS Phase Three, Four, and Five project. Item L is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Blankenship CPA Group, PLLC, for audit services for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025. Any item that a council member would like to pull off and talk about individually?
Just real quick on item K, the extension time on that, Tom? Do we know how long that is?
So to what, Tom? We're going to pull that one off and talk about that one individually. And we'll go, so I'm going to, while you're looking for that, I will open the floor for a motion for all items on consent other than item K. Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion on all items other than item K? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Consent agenda passes other than item K. So item K is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract extension with Neil Schaefer for additional time on the ITS Phase Three, Four, and Five project.
Okay, yeah, that's the, that's the contract extension. That's not necessarily an extension of the actual project. That's for the additional services.
This is May of, this is December 24th, May of '25. How long is the extension for, is my question?
It'll take us through the remaining portion of the project, which will be completed. They're expecting to be completed by end of June with everything being done. But then Neil Schaefer's still going to be working as far as putting some paperwork together for us and submitting those final closeout documents to T-Dot. So they'll probably finish the work probably around in the fall of this year, as far as just paperwork goes.
I'm fine with it. I was just kind of curious to know how much longer that might extend.
No, we're, construction, construction's almost complete as far as like all the fibers in place. It's just them completing all the paperwork. That's all.
Okay, then do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. We only have one public hearing tonight, and it's a consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of Tax Map 34G Group A Parcel 1.00 to go from PRD with LSO to PID with LSO. It's requested by Robert Latimer. The property requested to be rezoned contains approximately 1.45 acres and is located at the intersection of South Lowry and Stewart Drive. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council. This is something you all looked at a couple of times now. It was deferred on second reading till tonight. And so it was re-advertised with another public hearing. This is at the intersection of South Flower Street and Stewart Drive. It also has frontage on South Side Drive, which is a private street. Land use plan is, for this area is the mixed-use center character area, which would support a range of mixed uses, building types. Should be focused on retail, restaurant, attached residential. Surrounding zoning is C2, C3, and PRD, which is the South Side Town Homes. The existing approved PRD would allow for 21 townhomes and three separate buildings. This requested planned industrial development is for a 78,277 square feet climate-controlled self-storage building, which would be three stories with a partial basement on the South Flower Street front end, so it would look like a four-story building from Lowry Street. Will be finished with a mix of brick and stone, along with glass and glazing. Two separate parking lots are proposed. Two separate parking lots, one accessed off Stewart Drive and one accessed off South Side Drive. A modified Type D landscape buffer is shown along the property line, but bordering the townhomes. And a six-foot-tall white vinyl privacy fence would be constructed along the entirety of the rear property line with the townhomes, as well as the adjacent home, which does have a C2 zoning on it. Planning Commission did recommend approval, 4-4 with one against, with about five conditions. Number one, the required minimum number of parking spaces per the ordinance is 26. Developer has requested an exception to allow for 22. The minimum building setback line along South Lowry is 40 feet, per requirements of the Lowry Street overlay. Developer has requested an exception to allow for 25-foot front setback. The Lowry Street overlay does require awnings or canopies to be at least nine feet above finished grade, to extend at least six feet from the building face. Developer has requested an exception to have the awnings to be approved as submitted. The landscaping requirements of the LSO will require, will apply. It will be reviewed in detail with the site plan if the rezoning is approved. Developer has requested an exception to the requirement for the type and size of street trees and frontage trees along Lowry Street due to utility conflicts, and to modify the Type D buffer along the northeastern side of the site, which was detailed a little bit earlier. And then also to provide a sidewalk along South Lowry Street. So again, the Planning Commission did recommend approval. Staff would also recommend approval with those conditions, as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Questions for Kevin on this? Mark or Steve, anything from planning that you'd like to add before we open the public hearing?
Not really. I mean, we've kind of talked about this a couple of times in council. And I think this is probably the best possible product that we can get for this development. We made a lot of changes as far as adding glass and removing, removing just fake facades and some other things that make it look more attractive and more like an office building or a doctor's office, maybe. And ultimately, this is less, I think, community impact than the development of additional townhomes would be that was previously approved on this site.
And how many town, remind me how many town?
21.
21.
And those two would front Lowry?
Oh, the, yeah, the townhomes would front Lowry.
If they were approved as a townhome.
Yeah, there were, I think there was three separate buildings. Two buildings kind of fronting Lowry, and then one in the back as well, kind of closer to the existing townhomes.
Okay, so.
Is this time for comments?
Sure.
Yeah. I'm kind of, kind of opposed to this, and I'm going to tell you why. Our land use plan calls for commercial and retail, or residential, correct, Kevin?
Yes.
And this is a rezoning to a industrial overlay, I guess, or PRD, PID. So that's one of the reasons. It's a four-story building. It's with a parapet wall. So it's going to look like, you know, a four-story plus from Lowry. And that's as, we're coming into the city. So it's going to be a big, a big building there as we come into the city. And I'm not sure we have any other buildings in that area that are of that statue in size. We're decreasing the front setback to required 40-foot to 25-foot. And then my other question was, is South Side Drive a private drive?
Yes, it is.
And, well, they had to get permission from the South Side Contaminium Association before they can access that to their parking lot.
This, I don't know how that HOA was set up. I know that HOA does maintain that roadway. But I don't, within that original property owner association that was set up, because this, this parcel, as well as the one on the other side of South Side Drive, were a part of that property originally when all was developed. So I don't know if those were, that association was set up to include. I know this property has rights per the plat to access it, I believe, though. As far as maintenance, long-term, and all that, if they would participate or not, I really don't know how that association was set up.
So, so the access to that private drive transfers with this development?
Right, I think that was, because that was set up when that, if I remember correctly, I'm pretty sure I am, that when that plat was done for the South Side Town Homes, that it was set up to allow.
You know, I give it as a good-looking building. I just don't think it fits here. That's, that's my position on it.
Great. Okay, I will, are you wanting to say something? I look at your face.
We need to wait for the, I guess, for the public hearing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So at this point, we will go to this public to see anyone who's here to speak for or against. And when you come forward, if you'll state your name, your address, if you live inside the town, and then you'll have three minutes to speak.
After I say my name, it starts?
Yeah. To what, we'll, we'll let you go after your name starts. Well, Amber will start it.
Okay, it's Frank Mancuso, 401 Wichita. I live within the community behind the proposed structure, which I'm asking this Mayor and Council to vote against, or at least table, because I already, he doesn't even know the access road. It is maintained by our HOA. Why hasn't a communication been with us yet? And I am on the board of the HOA, so is John, who's here. So I come here in front, I'm here a year. I'm a native New Yorker, as you could probably hear. I don't have an accent, you do. You know, I'm in construction and facilities management for over 40 years. I've built this type of community, this type of building, senior living, retail stores, pretty much anything you use every day. I'm also a former public official from Hudson County, New Jersey. So I know how the politics and, you know, I'm not saying it's bad, just I know how it works. So this type of facility, like someone mentioned, it's high. Is there a height restriction that we have in this town? And also other things, I didn't know about this until about a month and a half ago. I never got a letter saying it was being proposed. And I'm here a year. And I'm only with, you know, I don't know, 200, 300 feet. I haven't been able to find online yet all of your codes and regs and all that stuff with the follow. So I'm not sure what that limit is on how far away from the front door somebody needs to be notified. I think One Street, Latimer Street, received a letter, but no one else did. When I found out, I was like, what? You know, a New Yorker came out, and some words came out, but it's all right. But some of the issues are, you know, the access to the road, which I just found out tonight, I was looking for this layout somewhere, I couldn't find it. So that got me going. So the other thing is, we have kids that live in the community as well, that we, we know where they live. People that are going to be driving through our back entrance, through the front entrance to get in there. We have a back entrance to their property. They're going to be speeding, they're speeding through there now. The care of the road's going to be deteriorating, because people are using our private road. So it's a big issue with the private road. Again, I asked the board to at least table a decision tonight, not vote yes or no. So we can have more communication. So we can have more communication, maybe they lower, if the height restriction is only 25 feet and it's 30, maybe it needs to go down one story. Access to our road, I would, on our HOA, I'm voting no, because that's going to make, make our road deteriorate quicker than it would be if just our cars are going through there. Let's see, or anything else? And the road repairs, and the other thing is, if it is moved ahead forward down a road, to help reduce, again, not knowing about the access from our road, what if part of that negotiation to help the community keep our residents safe is that we put gates up? That we, the property owner of that building, put gates up.
Three minutes, Mayor.
To prevent their visitors from coming through our property.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Is there anyone else here to speak for or against? If you'll state your name and your address and if you live in the city limits.
Good evening, I'm Deja Davis and I live on 101 Latimer. So first and foremost, I wanted to touch on the potential negative impact on property values. So this can decrease our home values and buyers are often discouraged by the presence of industrial-looking structures, increased traffic, and the possibility of around-the-clock activity. This could mean a tangible financial loss for every homeowner in this neighborhood. We chose this neighborhood, or at least I chose this neighborhood, for its residential character, the safety of it, and not to live next to a commercial development that is not in harmony with our community's environment. Placing a storage facility here disrupts that vision. We also have concerns about increased traffic, security, lighting, and noise, all of which can affect our quality of life. These aren't just hypothetical issues, they are real everyday disruptions that could result in this facility. We respectfully urge the council to consider alternative locations that are more commercially zoned and better suited for this type of business. And just to lastly touch on the private road that we have, if we think about it, when we leave, unless you're going right to go all the way down Murphy's Road, if people have to go to 840 or 24, you have to quickly make that right and then that quick U-turn, and wait for that oncoming traffic, you know? So that will create, that'll increase the traffic buildup on that road, which is not a problem right now, but I could just imagine what the problem would be if this facility is placed here. So, lastly, I just ask that you guys help us protect our community, our property values, and our quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if you'll state your name, your address, and if you live in the town limits?
Thank you very much, Mayor Dan Eppright, 114 Seward Street, Smyrna, Tennessee, inside the city limits. My hearing could be better, but I think when Kevin Riggsby was briefing out this project, even though that's clearly a four-story building, I thought he said it was a three-story building. And I think that was one of the changes that the developer made to accommodate the concerns. And I, I'd just like to get that cleared up, I think it was briefed by Kevin Riggsby as a three-story building.
Anyone else, if you'll come forward?
Robin Wright, 414 Wichita Drive, I actually live in South Side Villas and don't have a lot to say, I think she said it well. I would like to show you guys our homes and.
To have this monstrosity, I'm sorry, if that's what it is, in front of us, is, is tall, it's going to block those people's natural sunlight. I didn't even know about using our private drive, but I don't see how this correlates with us and to have a business in front of our home.
Thank you.
Just wanted to share that with you, and I, I'm just opposed to this, just flat out being in this area. There are two located right literally around the corner, I can walk to them, why does it have to be right here? This could be a better use of space, certainly we can come up with something better than this, thank you.
Hello, my name is Tiffany Beatty, I live on 4015 Wichita Drive. I'm not going to repeat all that stuff again, but I came to say no and agree with the traffic, the safety. I'm not opposed of anything being there, but the storage facility, yeah, I'm opposed to that, so I just wanted to agree with my neighborhood.
Thank you.
My name is John Hendricks, I live at, which, Latimer Drive as well, and I, I just want to voice my opinion, I'm opposed to it as well. I think we have enough storage buildings in this community. It's going to end up looking like a, just a community with nothing but storage buildings. So I don't, I think it is, it's an eyesore, and I think it's, it's a very bad thing, situation for the whole town itself. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak for or against this item? Okay, seeing no one else, I will close the public hearing and go to council for a motion.
I'll make a motion to deny.
Okay, we have a motion to deny.
A second.
A motion and a second to deny. All in favor of denial, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Yes, did you get everybody? Yes. Okay. I've got three against and four, or three for the motion to deny. Correct, three for motion to deny and four, so the denial does not pass, so we have to have a motion, an affirmative motion, so do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
A motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second to get it on the table.
Okay, have a motion and a second discussion.
Well, I'll jump in first. First of all, Kevin, I know we deferred it a month ago, and for whatever reason, it was deferred, and I voted to defer it, because I felt like that usually when it comes up to, and they ask for deferrals, we normally allow that. But I guess my question is, when the deferral was asked for, there was going to be, they were going to go back and look at it and come, I understand to come back with some, hopefully some changes, so what, what, what changed?
I didn't receive anything, any revisions from what you looked at last month.
So you never had any conversation with them at all?
There was never any, any additional, no, nothing was resubmitted to me, or revisions, revised plans were submitted to be on this.
Okay, so was asked to defer, to look at it, but then nothing came back?
Correct.
And I think Jerry just hit the nail on the head with your comment, because you said that they were going to look at it. But I don't think they promised changes, as I recall, they were going to study it. So, that might be the difference of where, I heard something different than you, but I'll, I'll just chime in real quick while we're in the discussion part of this. You know, we sit on planning and we look at these proposals and we think about, I, I heard Jerome say this was a more of a C2 product area, but it's not zoned C2, currently it's zoned for additional townhomes, currently that's what it's zoned for. So, I felt, just personally felt, that this was a better fit than throwing more townhomes right there on Lowry Street. We hear often from our constituents, often, that they are finished with townhomes and apartments, and we're trying to listen to that. So, this building, as you can see right there, doesn't look like a, doesn't look like a storage building. To Steve's point, I heard him say something a minute ago, he said, "This is as good as we could hope for." Actually, I think it's something even better than that when you look at that building. That is not an ugly building, y'all, that's a very nice-looking structure, so I worry about sometimes when we don't see things come to fruition, something else worse comes later. That's what I worry about. So it's kind of like be careful what you wish for, because you may get something even of lesser quality than that. So, that's why I feel the way I did.
Other comments?
Yeah, go ahead, Raquel, sorry.
I agree that the building is a nice building, I just believe that this building doesn't fit the area where it is. I think that this building is, will stand out and not really be in an appropriate place for coming into Smyrna. What, 78,000 square feet? It's going to be a very, it's a gigantic building that doesn't have anything similar or consistent with, with this look. So, I'm, I'm not comfortable with this, this being in this location. So that's my concern.
Yeah, I'd like to offer a few comments. The, the land use plan in this area, even though it's zoned for 21 more townhomes, I'm not as concerned with 21 townhomes on a four-lane road next to Nissan Drive and going back out Tate Park 40 than I am with a four-story-plus building positioned right next to existing townhomes. And just the, the scale of it, it just doesn't fit the area. I mean, beautiful building, absolutely, but I think, I think they hit on some points, the quality of life. I think we have a dumpster sitting in the back, there's going to be lighting, they're showing access to a private drive that the Condominium Association maintains. I think those all are, are concerns we need to be looking at.
Other comments or questions?
I do have a question about the notice. Several of the citizens who spoke said that they didn't receive notice, so how do you, how do you normally send out notice to the adjacent landowners?
Yeah, what we normally send that to is any adjoining property owner or if they're across the street. So, we don't, there's not a distance, we don't go 500 feet or 1,000 feet or anything like that, we just send to those who are adjoining. I think they've mentioned that the folks on that one street did receive the letters, because I assume, I can't remember exactly what street they said, it's most likely those are the folks that are on the homes that were directly adjacent, you know, to, to the property.
So the Latimer Drive ones?
Correct, yeah, which would be the ones that would be adjacent to it. We put signs up, I know, I think the first sign didn't last, it got, it got blown away, or something happened to it. We went back and put another sign up too as well, in addition to the, to the letters we sent out. That was, you know, along the Lowry Street side of the property. So that's kind of, that's our process, we follow, same process we normally do with this.
Then, one more question, Kevin. Would the, going from a 40-foot setback to a 25-front setback, will that obstruct visibility of the adjacent building on the other side of South Side Drive?
It would, if you're coming down Lowry Street from town going towards 840, it might obstruct a little bit, just because it will be in front of where it's at, it certainly would obstruct it coming in towards town, certainly, yeah. Anyway, with the, obviously this building would be taller than that building as well, so I think it sets up maybe a little bit higher. Because this one, I think the question was asked, is it a three, I did say it is a three-story building with a partial basement. And so from the Lowry Street side, it would look like a four-story building. If you're looking at it from the back parking lot, it's a, it's a three-story building, so that's kind of how it will be, so.
Kevin, if, if the landowner decided to, to Jerome's point, it's a commercial use corridor, if the landowner decided to come in and request a, a C2 zone, what are we opening it up to then if, if it's not going to remain townhomes? For example, if it's going to follow the land use plan to the nth degree, what will it open it up to as a C2 zone?
Which, I think it had a C2 zone before it became the PRD, I believe.
It was that before the PRD, I remember it.
For C2 is a fairly open commercial zone, I mean, if they were to request that and council would approve it. Most commercial uses would be allowed in that, certainly restaurants would be allowed there, gasoline stations, things like that. It would not allow for any, like automobile services or automobile sales would not be allowed in C2.
But certainly restaurants and retail.
Certainly restaurants, retail, like I said, gas, convenience store, gas station.
Gas station, market, yeah.
Sure.
So, that, I think that's the reason the landowner typically a while back chose to go, at that point, a softer zoning. And I don't know the landowner personally, I, I don't know that they would want to take this and convert it back now that they're hearing the land use plan would allow a C2 zone. And if they did and brought it to planning and it met zoning, if it met the zoning corridor, planning may in fact reapprove it back to C2. And then there's that piece of the puzzle that I have to think about too. If it goes to a restaurant or a gas station or a service station or anything like that, and it would be zoned properly for that, there'd be no stopping it at that point. This is why I went down the path of thinking this was a softer zone. I hear the residents, and I hear you, but this is the reason I had to think of it the way I did, not really wanting to see it revert back to something that would probably be more intrusive, a gas station or a market that would fit that zoning at the time. So I just want everybody to understand why we have to process these things the way we do.
You know, this piece of property's come before us many times in many different forms over the years, going way back. And, you know, really for me looking at it, I, I see that this is probably one of the best plans that has been brought to us. You know, and a lot of times I look at different projects and, and think about, okay, if I live next door to it, what would I think, you know, what would I want there? What would I like to, to, to be there?
Nothing.
Absolutely, absolutely, but we all know, you know, if you, you know, you like your view, you better own it, but, you know, that's not always practical to do. But, you know, the idea, and, and I'm pretty sure that when we, when the PRD came in before, I voted against it because I just didn't think that that fit there. And, you know, you think about, okay, how much traffic you're going to get from more residential, how much traffic you're going to get from a a storage building such as this, and I think about, I don't know why, well, yeah, I do know why, I've got some, I've got some, I've read a storage building over here, and, you know, I haven't been to it this year, and I think most people are kind of like me. You put stuff in there and then you just don't go back and, until you need something out of there or whatever, but it's not a high-traffic situation, is my point. And, and, you know, this building will be so much better a neighbor than to have 12 to 14 more apartments in there. And of course then we go.
Twenty-one, actually.
How many?
Twenty-one, twenty-two.
Twenty-one?
Twenty-one.
Okay, but, you know, it's a, I don't know, it's a tough one, and I, I feel for the people who have come in and spoke tonight, because, I mean, you know, it's, it's your neighbor, it's your new neighbor. But, I don't know, that's all I got.
Any other comment?
Or more? The utilities, are they showing connecting on the South Side Drive, that private drive?
I know there's water, I know there's utilities along the frontage, along Lowry.
There's sewer water, I think. Will they be allowed to, I'm just trying to wrap my hands around a private drive being utilized for commercial access?
Conceptually, they are showing, doesn't mean it has to be this way, because we don't have the actual design, site plan yet, but they are showing, on their page eight of this booklet, is showing connecting on South Side Drive for water and sewer. Doesn't mean, like, there's, I know there's water, there's some utilities in the front that may be able to, we may be able to work through that to another place if you all choose to approve it tonight, when the actual site plan, construction plans come in. The site plan will come if it's approved. Yeah, the final design, right.
If it gets approved.
If it gets approved.
To planning?
To planning, it comes just, just to the Planning Commission, right.
Other comments?
I just did the quick calculation on the usage, 21, 1.4 acres, that would be 15.7 units an acre. Twenty-one, one-point-four acres, that would be fifteen-point-seven units an acre. We would not want to approve that anywhere in town.
Are you getting ready to consider a little bit over ten?
That's right.
If it passes.
But that's.
Well, consider it, yeah.
Okay.
I I voted against that when I'm planning.
So, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Order three.
Okay, we'll move on to new business under our Planning Commission report. The first item is consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation in C-two, R-three, and I-two zoning of property on tax map eleven, parcel five-point-zero-zero, and part of parcel six-point-zero-zero requested by Joe Haddix on behalf of the Rollins Marshall Trust containing eight, eight-hundred-and-eighteen-point-three acres. The annexation would also include portions of the existing public right-of-way for State Route two-sixty-six, Jefferson Pike, State Route four-fifty-two, Bill France Road, Mona Road, Allen Barrett Road, and Powell's Chapel Road. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is a request that was recommended denial by the by the Planning Commission the other night. This is one that's actually been in front of them, um, for about two and a half years now. Uh, the the owners kept requesting deferral and and the Planning Commission kept deferring it. At the May meeting, there was a separate, uh, request considered that's basically the same tracts of land, but completely, uh, not completely different, but somewhat different zoning plan. However, they never withdrew this request, so we had to act on it in order to to finalize these this situation. So, um, the Planning Commission did recommend denial of this again unanimously. Staff has, you know, we we did discuss the other requests pretty extensively the other night, and there's still several concerns of different things with that that we're kinda working through, uh, sewer and just various other things. But so, basically, this was just a recommendation to to deny. This will, we'll put this, part of this request to bed, and then we can consider the other one, uh, at some point in the future, they'll come back once they can, can address all of the concerns that we had, so.
This is kinda to get this one off the books, and it is, so do I have a motion?
I'll move.
To?
To.
To deny?
To deny.
A move, a motion to?
Confirm the denial, I'm sorry.
Okay, a motion to deny. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second discussion.
Yeah, a few, few discussion items, Kevin. We've discussed in the past. If this does come back, I've talked to Dave about it, about a impact fee analysis, what it'll cost to, you know, upgrade the roads, extend the utilities, provide fire and police coverage, and then, of course, CUD, you know, providing fire flows, and then also the impact of the, uh, to the sewer system, uh, the wastewater plant. And all those can be discussed if it ever comes back.
Sure. Put that information in the Planning Commission's.
Yeah, we've seen that.
It was in that packet.
The initial kinda look at it, yes, we did.
But of just that property, not additional properties that were out there? It was only that property?
It was just relative to this.
Yes, to that one.
To the request, this this property is not anything else, right?
Okay, so any other comments about this property? Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes to deny. Item two is consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation, R-one zoning of property on tax map fifty-one, parcel eight-point-one-one requested by Weekly Homes LLC containing six-point-oh-four acres. The property is located at sixty-three-oh-four Lee Road. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is a request for annexation. Uh, it's sixty-three-oh-four Lee Road. It's about seven-hundred feet west of the intersection of Lee Road and Lancaster Road. Land use plan would support medium-density, single-family in this area. Surrounding zoning is RM in Rutherford County and PRD, which is the Hidden Springs, Buckingham Hills, and all the branch estates, PRDs in Smyrna. The town would be providing all services to this area upon annexation except for water, which would be provided by Consalde Utility District. Uh, this request involves the remaining portion of the property, which was annexed and zoned PRD September two thousand twenty-four for phase three of the Hidden Springs development. At that time, this six acres was not requested to be annexed with the seller of that property to build one house on the six acres. That is still their plan to do that, uh, but they do wish to connect to Smyrna Sewer System, and so they, or which would require annexation. And so, basically, this is for six acres to be annexed, um, but, and to build one home is the plan. Uh, the Planning Commission did review this, did recommend approval, uh, and staff would also recommend approval.
Steve or Mark, anything you wanna add?
Mayor, I've stayed out of this one, so I'm gonna abstain on this one. I've not voted on anything to do with sixty-three-oh-four since its inception.
Okay. Steve, anything?
Yeah, it's honestly just what Kevin said, it's pretty straightforward. It's, um, one home lot that's gonna, that's asking to be annexed. It probably was excluded from the PRD because they wanted to keep it as a six-acre tract. Obviously, you know, six-acre tract with one home isn't something we see very often, so we supported it.
Okay. Now, any other questions or comments on this?
If this is annexed in, Kevin, we don't have any guarantees they'd wanna come back and do it PRD.
Oh, surely, it could, it certainly could happen. There's no guarantee, this is a long one.
Because I know we've, we've had a lot of issues out there with the, you know, the hot-density developments.
Yeah, there's nothing that says they couldn't come back later, but that's, that's not their intention right now.
But they would have to go through the process of going to the planning, they would have to come through us, all of that.
It would be our zoned R-one, so they could not do that without coming back through this, the Planning Commission and Council.
Other questions or comments?
Yeah, based on the zoning, what Jerry and I was just talking about, they're, they're making this R-one or part of the PRD?
It's R-one.
R-one, right?
It's R-one.
Without coming back to us, all they could do is one house every fifteen thousand square foot of the lot, so, you know, they could put more than one home on it, but it'd still be R-one.
Okay. Um, do we have a motion?
A motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With one abstention. Item three is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of tax map twenty-eight E, Group A, parcel nineteen-point-zero-zero, to go from R-four to PRD requested by Eric Olson. The property requested to be rezoned contains one-point-two-eight acres and is located at five-seventy Rock Springs Road. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is a request to rezone, uh, one tract of land, uh, five-seventy Rock Springs Road. It's about eleven-hundred feet east of the intersection with Mason Tucker Drive. The land use plan would support mixed residential in this area. Surrounding zoning is R-three, R-four, and PRD, which is the Hartsbrunch Village PRD. Rock Springs Road is designated as a collector on the major thoroughfare plan. Development of this property would require dedication of right-of-way and construction of a sidewalk along Rock Springs Road. There is an existing house on this property, uh, which would be removed. Uh, this request of PRD is to add this parcel, uh, to the Hartsbrunch Village PRD with thirteen additional townhomes. Uh, the existing PRD would allow for a hundred-and-sixty-nine townhomes on twenty-two-point-one-nine acres, so that's about seven-point-six-two per acre. Uh, the approved site plan, uh, was for a hundred-and-sixty-seven townhomes on that same acreage, so about seven-point-five-three is what's actually is being constructed currently. Uh, the thirteen additional townhomes of one-point-two-eight acres, uh, standing alone would be a density of ten-point-one-six, uh, would raise the overall unit to a hundred-and-eighty units on the twenty-three-point-four-seven to about seven-point-six-seven, so slightly more dense, uh, for the overall development than what's currently there. All requirements of the existing approved PRD would apply, including that the townhomes would range from twelve-hundred to twenty-two-hundred, he's a square feet. Would be finished with brick, manufactured stone, and fiber cement stiding. A type-C buffer is proposed. There is one, uh, single-family residence that would butt this, uh, and they are proposing a type-C buffer there. Uh, access would be through the existing development. Uh, Planning Commission did review this, did recommend approval, five-four-two against. Staff would recommend approval.
Okay. Mark or Steve, anything from you guys?
This one's a little unique because it's an extension to what's already been approved there, and, um, I've struggled with it, I'll be honest with you. But that's the only reason I felt to be, that I could support this one is because it's just adjoining what's already happened. But I've, I've had a hard time thinking through it, to be honest.
But it doesn't meet our current requirements, correct? In regards to parking?
It was not, no. It's, it's extending what's, meeting the requirements of what was in place with the existing development, this tying into, yeah.
That issue along with the precedent that I think it sets is the reason I voted no against it. I get it that this is relatively small piece of property, one-point-something acres, and it's just adjacent to an existing PRD. But if this was somewhere else and it was twenty acres adjacent to an existing PRD, would we allow them to go under the previous PRD that doesn't meet our current restrictions or guidelines? We, we would not. Um, the piece of property we just looked at that had one house on six acres, if that had been the same thing, we would have said no. And so, for me, thirteen more units on one-point-two acres is over ten units per acre. The fact that this one acre can drive the overall density of the development up point-one-five tells you how dense the homes are gonna be on this one piece of, one, one and a quarter acre. And so, I don't have issues with homes, with townhomes here. It is consistent with what's around it. Uh, I don't even have issues with, um, uh, if they were going to have six or seven units per acre, which is matching what's around it, but I think they should have to, and based on the way the law reads, we get a chance to vote on a PRD here, so we get a ju, a vote, we get a chance to vote on our current PRD restrictions. And so, that's why I voted against it, is it doesn't meet our current PRD restrictions, and just because they're adding to an existing one doesn't, in my opinion, grandfather them in.
Yeah, I've, I've got a, I don't know if it's a process question, but basically, where this, this development is grabbing this other piece of land, but what was already approved was a set density for that development. And if we bring in that tract of land, it's increasing that overall development. Can, can we systematically or process-wise do that to where we bring in another piece and it basically trumps the density that was set in the previous approval?
I'll let, makes sense, yeah.
I mean, if it's going the other way, decreasing, it'd be a no-brainer, you know?
No, it makes sense, yeah. It's why I struggle with it so much.
But legally, we can.
Yeah, 'cause, because they're essentially, we're essentially reapproving the existing PRD is what we're doing. We're not just, well, it's separate.
If you do that, then they gotta go by the new parking.
Well, that would be possible. Yeah, this is a, this is a request to add to the Hartsbrunch PRD, so essentially, we're reapproving the Hartsbrunch PRD with this included, if we were to approve this. Is that not right, Jeff?
I mean, it's a new piece. I understand what you're saying, but it.
In theory.
Yeah. This is a completely new piece, it's not a put amendment, I understand what you're, and realistically, that's what's happening.
But it's the only way they can get around the, the parking requirement.
Correct.
Well, you have to, it begs the question too, to look at the rest of the surrounding property there. I mean, are, are, are they gonna come back with those two parcels that are left there and ask for the same thing again?
I thought the same thing.
I mean, I, I don't know, but I mean, to me, there's, there's, uh, you know, between the density and the parking, is there a motion on the floor here?
Uh, yeah.
No, I make a motion, we deny.
I see. Motion, motion and a second?
Just get to the point.
Any discussion? All in favor of denial, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is denied. Item B, consideration of ordinance adopting the budget for the fiscal year twenty-two-five, twenty-two-six. Rex, it's your show. For the last time, are you excited about that or sad?
A little both.
I understand.
I'd be leaning more toward excitement than sad.
Does Sierra get to do this the following month? I'm gonna save all my questions up for next one.
Okay, I just wanna let everybody know that the budget has been posted on the town's website. You can click on Departments and then, uh, go to Finance. The ordinance and budget for fiscal year twenty-five and twenty-six are submitted for your consideration. I have included a spreadsheet detailing changes from retreat to first read for your convenience. And Sierra can answer any questions you have, only changes. And we're asking that you approve the ordinance adopting the budget for fiscal year twenty-five and twenty-six.
We have had quite a bit of discussion about this. Been through our budget retreat and, um, a couple of presentations, so are there any questions about the budget for twenty-five, twenty-six? Seeing none, do I have a motion? A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any, oh, was that a no? I thought, I'm sorry, I thought it was a question. Uh, any opposed? Okay, budget passes. Item C is consideration of an ordinance adopting the property tax rate for the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Rex?
Good news there. The tax rate ordinance establishes the property tax rate for fiscal year twenty-five and twenty-six. Our recommendation is for the tax rate to remain the same from the prior year at fifty-two-point-five-seven cents on each one-hundred dollars of assessed taxable property. We're asking you to approve this ordinance adopting the, the tax rate.
One thing I think that's important for citizens to know, um, in Rutherford County, other than Eagleville, we have the lowest property tax rate. We are the thirteenth-largest, um, municipality in the state of Tennessee, and of those thirteen municipalities, we have the second-lowest property tax rate, only behind Franklin. So, I think that that's pretty exciting, and, um, I think you get a pretty good bang for your buck here for, uh, the property tax in the town of Smyrna, so. And a lot of that has to do with our employees and, um, what they do day in and day out to make that happen, so. Questions on property tax rate? Do I have a motion?
Question, but just a statement, you know, to, to tag along with what you just said. I mean, having a triple-A plus bond rating with that tax rate is tremendous.
I know Rex, Rex got sick of hearing me harp on it, didn't you, Rex?
I heard about it once or twice.
So.
I'm just, I'm just glad that we've had, uh, as painful as the growth is, uh, the growth is and the development is what's helped keep this the way it is. We haven't had, I've been, this is my ninth year on the council, and we've not had a tax increase in all nine years.
It's been about fifteen years, hasn't it?
It, it has been longer, but for me, I've been involved nine years.
About eight.
Eleven years.
So, I, 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 uh.
Times are tough, buddy. I'm not afraid to do what's gotta be done.
I think it is, um, it's, it's a testament to that triple-A bond rating, it's a testament to Rex's budgeting and the leadership that he's given us to, to be able to keep this low for our citizens, so thank you.
Okay, um, do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve it.
Great, second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Tax rate passes. Okay, we'll move on to item D, which is consideration of an ordinance to approve year-end budget amendments for fiscal year twenty-two-five.
These are the proposed year-end budget amendments for fiscal year twenty-five. These include the year-end transfer of excess surplus funds to the capital project fund, town manager recruitment, staff development and training, service awards and recognition, unforeseen repair and maintenance, and employee expenses. Several capital projects, primarily Cedarstone Tennis and Pickleball Project, equipment for a fire truck, computer upgrade, and building improvements. Staff recommends approving these budget amendments.
Questions on these budget amendments? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Tell me.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I didn't see anything on my desk tonight for other, Amber or Dave, anything for other? Okay. Status reports, Sierra, are you doing status reports, or is Rex doing status reports?
I think she would.
She's just dying to do one? She's just dying to do one?
She's getting ready.
Okay.
Okay, for the April state shared tax, we received six hundred and sixty-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars. This puts us at a cumulative increase of two point three seven percent above prior year collections and three point three percent below budget. And one thing I wanted to point out-
Is this negative six percent right here? In 2023, these three months right here, August through October?
The state legislature passed a food sales tax holiday for those three months. And it had a hold harmless clause to it. And we got paid in that December. And that, that's screwed, uh, makes the numbers misleading for that month. Does that make sense?
I was going to ask you if that was a financial term, screwed.
I thought I'd misheard Rex wrong, to be quite honest with you. I said he may ski, but said the other, gotcha, okay.
That didn't come out right.
Way to get it in the last day.
Okay, let's move on to the local sales tax. We received one million, six hundred thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars. This puts us at a cumulative increase of four point one three percent above prior year collections and four point oh five percent below budget.
Rex, I think I know the answer, but I'm going to ask so that you can say it for everybody else. When we have these small increments where we're below budget, you're building in flexibility in the budget to absorb those small variations. So if we continue down this path, it doesn't, it's not necessarily a negative hit to our plan.
Yes, well, we have vacant positions during the year and that provides a buffer. We also have capital projects that get delayed or postponed for a while. That also helps out the budget. So we're getting a little tighter, but I think we're going to have surplus.
Thank you.
Questions for Rex on either local or state shared? Thanks, sir. Um, before I move to you, Amber, anything from department heads or directors tonight? Oh, guess who? Come on up, Charles. I hope you're going to give us good news.
Yes, ma'am, ma'am, I've been requested to give an update on the Washington Street project. Currently, we have the road-
Well, just so people, in case they don't know where Washington Street is, can you tell them for us?
Okay, Washington Street is downtown, it connects Lowry Street over to Front Street. Currently, the railroad portion is closed down. Where the project has finally come through, that we're adding sidewalks on both sides of Washington Street that will lead from Lowry Street over to Front Street. The project started Monday, we've already got the curb poured today, pouring sidewalks tomorrow. We'll let those cure out. And by Friday, at the end of the workday, we will reopen Washington Street to the roundabout. Later on, next week, we'll come back and we will only close the road down during work, work hours and then we will reopen each evening.
Is that project older than the ITS? I said, is that project older than the ITS?
It's been-
I think it is.
I've had it for five and a half years since I've been here. And it was started by Kevin and Tom before I got here. They're the ones that secured the grant for, like I said, this is a ninety-ten, which is very good. It's hard to get those, but it is a railroad improvement type project through TDOT grant on this project.
I'm glad to hear, I had a business owner reach out to me last night and was asking about the road being closed. So I'm glad to hear that we're-
Right, like, so we just want to leave it closed Thursday and Friday. Just let the curb and sidewalk concrete cure up before we open it and have any possibility of impact from vehicles on that fresh concrete. So that's why we're going to wait till Friday evening to open it back up.
Charles, I don't want to go down the rabbit trail here with all these other projects, so I'm not.
That's all right.
You guys did a great video for the public-
Yes.
-to understand what was being done down there, so thank you for doing that. Can you, for the public watching tonight, just explain the reason for the expansion of the roundabout? A lot of people say, why are they widening the roundabout?
The roundabout, it's really the same footprint. What we've done is taken the stamped concrete and we've raised that portion of the roundabout up. That was done during design to make the roundabout safer and to designate the travel lanes better. Because you could kind of cut the roundabout short and traffic was unsure, are you going around? Or are you, you know, exiting one of the legs on it? So that came through the design from the consultant to enlarge it and bring that up. It is a mountable curb and the inset there that's currently setting, that will be pavers. It is not going to be a water feature, even though it is holding a little-
That's another question.
It is holding a little water at this time, but no, that will be pavers as soon as the contractor sub gets TDOT certified that they will be putting pavers in the, that portion of it. And it will be mountable and trucks can, like I said, if you have a larger vehicle that does come through there, it is mountable and vehicle rated.
Thank you. We had asked you some questions about those pavers a couple of meetings ago. Since then, I saw that we have that basic same design in front of TCAT at the roundabout there.
Right.
And all of those pavers are laying down nicely, they don't roll up, trucks can ride over them, there's no issues, so.
Right, and like I said, the bed's set for it and like I said, the pavers are coming from the rock place just down the street. So they did buy local.
Shop local.
Yes, and Eden Springs got update today that they will start, okay. Yes, sir.
In, in talking about the sidewalk crossing the tracks and-
Yes.
Most definitely going to get increased pedestrian traffic down there. Of course, that's the idea for it. What would the process look like from possibly lowering the speed limit through the middle of town?
I think Mr. Santucci would like to take that one.
So, a couple of things. It, it's possible. It's, it's really something that we, we control according to TDOT, I want to confirm that. But so what I'd like to do is, I'd like to get with staff, including PD, to analyze what that would look like and what would be a, some recommendations that we would have surrounding that. But on the surface, I think it might be a good idea, just looking at what we're trying to do in that area, increase that multimodal traffic, pedestrian-friendly environment. So we will look at that in short order and either on the next workshop or next council meeting, we'll be able to report back to you on that. Also, if I may, just want to thank Vice Mayor for recognizing them on that video. I thought they also did a great job between Charles, Tom, and Mike there. Charisma on camera is great. But we won't, we're going to start doing that more often. And so you're going to see those videos coming out on social media every once in a while so that we can give updates on some of these larger roadway construction projects, so, yeah.
Question, Charles?
Yes.
The curb's going to be opened on Friday?
Right, the crossing across the track. Right now, currently, traffic can flow around the roundabout.
But on the curb, you use the high early strength concrete to meet the twenty-eight day compressive strength.
Well, the roundabout's been poured and sitting there for a while, so it's cured. It's, it's got, did the test cylinders, five thousand pound test on those, so concrete is good.
When will they pave that street? I had a business owner ask me that yesterday.
Right, the water project right now is looking to be completed in the next two to three weeks. So they've got the main line down Front Street. They do have service connections to make to the businesses. So once they finish and they are completely done, then we'll come back and mill and resurface that portion of Washington Street and Front Street. And then the project, Tom, like I said, has a Front Street Improvement Project coming on later that will mill and resurface the remainder of Front Street.
So probably three weeks?
Possibly about three weeks. Like I said, I'll have to go back and get another Flagman Rail Crossing Agreement with CSX. So that takes a couple of weeks of process. So once we're sure everything is done in the ground, that's when we will come back and mill and resurface.
I had some business, a business owner asked me about it yesterday.
So, but that's, that's what, we're waiting to make sure that waterline project is completed before we come in. Because once I make the request, I'm held to that schedule with CSX.
Thank you.
Other things for Charles?
Just Eden Springs, like I said, got notified this afternoon that they will start paving on it from the, they will start at the Florence Road section. So there'll be paving between Florence Road and Nissan Drive starting in the morning.
And the barrels on Oak National Highway, is that continuation of milling? I think it's right around Bailey Collins. Right around the KOA traffic light.
I'm not sure what that is.
There's a whole set of barrels laying down.
Not for sure.
One lane of Oak National.
That's Atmos.
Okay, yeah, Atmos is coming in and doing a project from Rock Springs Road up to Hazelwood, doing a replacement of their high-pressure gas line coming in.
So that's out in the traffic lane.
Right, so that will, that is part of their Atmos project.
Sure.
Okay. Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Before I move around, there's two people I'd li- oh, well, one more.
We really quick.
Okay.
We made an emergency purchase for the water plant for an automatic transfer switch at the Mason Tucker Booster Station, which enables us to provide backup power if the electric was to go out. It was from border states and the cost was sixteen thousand, fourteen dollars and forty-four cents.
Questions for Mike on that? Thanks. Anyone else have to come before us? Two people I want to recognize, first of all, is Dennis Molina, who is our new grant person. Do you want to come up so everybody can, in case they haven't gotten to meet you? So we do have some questions for you about tonight, to see how well you listened. Are you prepared?
How many grants have you written right over there to y'all?
Tried my best.
So tell us a little bit about you.
Thank you, well, my name is Dennis Molina. I just came from Colorado. So, yeah, I'm the first grant coordinator here.
Dennis, can you speak up a little bit?
Oh, I'm sorry.
HD's hard of hearing, just so you know.
My name is Dennis Molina. I came from the University of Colorado. No, I'm just happy to be here. Everyone has been extremely nice to me. Like I said, told people before, it's really odd to have people really nice to me because I'm from, I'm coming from a major city. So if someone is really nice to me, they more than likely want something from me, so. It's really nice to be here.
So, welcome to the South, that's kind of what happens. So we're glad to have you and we're expecting big things from you to help keep our property taxes low by writing those grants.
Yeah, absolutely, I'm excited to meet all the department heads and then just do the best I can to pressure off everyone.
I think you will find all of the department heads, as well as the other employees, will be very welcoming and any way we can help you, so welcome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Second person I want to introduce that's actually not even gotten started with us yet is Brian Goss, our new- See, he thought he was back there hiding, that he couldn't be seen, but I did spot him, so come on up. Brian is our new fire chief and will be starting on Monday. So you're one of those students that comes in early and does extra work and all that, right?
I just didn't want to be too far behind when I, when I got started. Actually, this is my week off in between jobs and it's been as busy as, as my final week was in Brentwood. So just very glad to be here and thank you for the opportunity and I look forward to doing great things.
Great, well, we saw you at the cookout, so we were glad to have you there as well. So we're excited to have you on board and you're going to be building on a foundation that those that came before you that did a great job, but we're excited about what you'll bring to the table.
Thank you, I've been in contact with, with the senior staff for about three weeks and they're phenomenal. And that excites me even more, so appreciate it.
Great, well, I think you'll also find all the rest of the department heads and other employees will be very welcoming.
They've been great, thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, Ms. Amber, anything?
I'm pretty good tonight, I think I'm all set. I don't have the census. I'm just waiting on the Santucci law to be signed into effect, it's on the governor's desk. Is it signed?
Yeah, I saw that it's actually in the TCA at this point from what I, what I saw.
Then I'm behind and my website, I'm checking this wrong.
Uh-oh, Dave?
Well, either way, we're not, we're done with the census, so. Want to recognize International Firefighters Day. It's observed every year on May fourth, which is also a big Star Wars fan day, to honor and pay tribute to the great work done by firefighters while protecting people's lives and property. Firefighters put their lives at risk, work tirelessly, and volunteer anytime to prevent damages caused by fire accidents. So acknowledging all of our firefighters, not only here in Smyrna, but everywhere else on International Firefighters Day. My second slide, I want to recognize all of our service award recipients. We had a wonderful reception that I want to thank our committee who put that together first and foremost. They did an excellent job of our very first service awards banquet that we did over at the, the event center. And so we recognize people four, five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty, and even thirty-five years of service. We honored over eighty-two employees, just showing how much longevity we do have here in the town, which I think is also a representation of what a great place this is to work. So want to thank everybody.
I talked to Heather about that, is there a way we can share that on our social media as well?
Yes, I believe we, we did post some things last week, but we can certainly repost it.
I don't think we posted that, I know we did to other-
These, right here?
Yeah, I don't think those got posted. And then maybe even for the thirty-five and thirty, maybe do those individually?
Yeah, sure.
Is that possible?
Yeah, we can certainly do that. So congratulations to all those recipients. And then, last week was also Public Service Recognition Week. And we held a little backyard barbecue, if you will, for all of our employees. We had a great turnout. Spent some time there on the grill, getting blasted by the smoke from burgers, but that's okay. I survived and it was a great time. And just really good to see everyone getting together outside of the work environment and people got to interact, you know. A lot of times, we're, we're all, we're all busy or we're at different locations, so getting everyone together was, was really great to see. Want to thank the council for coming out to that, really appreciate your support and I'm sure the employees enjoyed that too. But we also gave out some swag and we, we had our, our new, our new logo there and branding marketing initiative that we'll be seeing a lot more of, so very exciting stuff there. And then this week marks the beginning of National Police Week and it's time to honor and remember the brave officers across the nation who have made the ultimate sacrifice or continue to show up every day to protect and serve their communities. So I want to recognize their dedication, particularly our folks. And if you go by the Smyrna Depot or the Justice Center, you'll be see that, you'll, you will see that it's lit blue throughout the rest of the week. So thank you again for all of those officers out there for their service. And that's all I have.
Jeffrey, you?
Just to add reference to Senate or House Bill seven eighty, signed by the Speaker on May eighth and is transmitted to the governor on May ninth, so it's just on his desk. He may be waiting on the Peach Amendment.
Anything else from you?
Should be done, no, I'm good.
We had Jeff's evaluation tonight and before the meeting and we just want to say how appreciative we are to Jeff and what a great job that he does for the town. And just so you all know, at Mayor's Caucus and other events that I attend, there are many of the other mayors that talk about their legal counsel reaching out to Jeff for, for ideas or things that we're doing here in the town that Jeff does a really, really good job for us. So we appreciate everything that Jeff does, so.
Thank you, I'm blessed to be here.
Jerome?
Yeah, first of all, Dave and staff, thanks for the Service Recognition Event at the Event Center and the cookout. The cookout was phenomenal, it gave us a chance to talk to, to the employees outside of Town Hall, and I think that, that I really appreciate that and, and all that the employees do. I have one slide tonight, it's Memorial Day Ceremony at the Captain Cush Memorial on Lee Victory at Recreation Park. Please join us as we remember and honor those who made the ultimate sacrifice for our freedom. Town Smyrna's Memorial Day Ceremony will be held Monday, May 26th at 9:00 a.m. at the Captain Cush USMC Memorial, United States Marine Corps Memorial, and, you know, it's not only a time to remember them, but also, also remember those who served and just want to say thank you to everyone that did.
Okay, Raquel?
All right, I do have a slide as well. The farmer's market, the Smyrna Depot Farmer's Market begins this Saturday. The market is open on each Saturday beginning May the 17th through September the 20th from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the historic Smyrna Depot. Come out and shop fresh, local produce, handmade goods and more, all while supporting our communities, farmers and artisans. And then, I'd like to say welcome to our new staff members and also say how, how much of a pleasure it was to participate in the Service Awards Banquet as well as the employee appreciation luncheon. It was good to see so many come out and actually hang out, not necessarily have to get something and go, but to spend time with their fellow employees, so that was good to see. And with regards to the Santucci bill, I didn't say this last time, but I do want to say congratulations to Representative Stevens and Dave for getting that passed and hopefully in the next day or so, he'll be signing. And I also wanted to say congratulations to Judge Stevens, who is an Athena Award Honoree this year, and that luncheon will be next, this Friday, this Friday. And also missed Mother's Day, so I hope everyone had, who, all the mothers, had a Happy Mother's Day and to also echo Jerome on Memorial Day. So, I want to remind everyone to remember all those who have served and to be safe on that holiday, and that's all I have.
Thanks. H.G.?
Yeah, I need to send out condolences to Tracy Turbone's family, which most of y'all know as Dottie, Dottie Perry. A prominent person throughout our community, you see her everywhere. Another young man has passed away, and that was Michael Higgins. His father was very instrumental in working with me at the soccer league when he was, when we started it, and Michael worked for me for a couple of years at my business and I thought a lot of him. But, Chief, we have three new employees for you back there. We had a penning ceremony that honored Fire Academy graduates, Kyle Garrett, Solomon Makabu, Chad Perry, Noah Sheets and Roman Shook. Well, there were three here and two weren't here, so there's five, I can do math, y'all, okay? Remarks were delivered by Assistant Chief Cameron Phelps, Town Manager Dave Santucci and Lieutenant Bert Wilson. And congratulations to our newest firefighters and welcome to the team, and that goes to you also, Chief. I think I have another slide, and it is one that we all need to be aware of, love where you live, help keep Smyrna litter-free. Also, I'd like to add to that to everybody having awareness of, of recycling also. The trash problem is going to rear its head and become very expensive for all of us before too much longer. Also, when Rex was up, he was referring to our sales tax numbers, so we keep our, our property tax low by keeping our sales tax numbers up, so shop local. And, Maristir, you're gonna be talking in a minute, when you talk, be kind, okay?
Me too, thanks, H.G. Jerry?
I think I have a slide. The fantastic time at Kids' Day, and I wanted to give a big, big thank you to TriStar, Stonecrest, Smyrna Fire and Police Departments, Smyrna Parks and Recreation, Smyrna Outdoor Adventure Center, and the Smyrna Adventure Center for making this event such a fun and educational experience for families in our community. Had a little rain that morning, they moved it inside and I don't think it missed a beat, watching those kids running around and, and looking at the bicycles and getting all the prebees, so just a big thank you to, to everyone that made that, made that happen. Okay, a couple of things here. We have, I just want to let you know, Sister City is still planning to head to Japan here in a couple of months, and we've got about twenty-one adults and kids that are going. And in the past, and this is before all the inflation, we used to cost about a thousand dollars to send each person over there, and because of the fundraisers that were done and how the community stepped up and all, basically every one of them were going for five hundred dollars. So, it's a big, big decrease for everybody, that was, that includes the adults and the kids as well, so we just want to say again, I know I've said it before, but we want to say again, thank you for the community really stepping up and helping in that, in that endeavor, so thank you so much. Jeff, I know we talked about it, but thank you for all you do, we really appreciate it. Keep, keep me out of trouble anyway, I appreciate that. And then, basically last, I had a, I had a birthday, I wasn't gonna say I had a birthday last week, and it was my seventieth, and I want to give a shout out to my wife. She, she had a surprise birthday party for me. Mayor, I think you were involved in getting some information out there as well, and a lot of you guys came, I appreciate it, and the people out here was there. And so, I topped the hill on Friday night, coming home, and I saw those cars in the yard and, and the yard beside us, so it was a, I had a great time, I just wanted to say thank you to her. Last week, when we were having the awards deal, the group saying happy birthday to me, I got cards, I got texts, I got phone calls, just it was special, and I just can't say thank you enough to everybody that, that reached out, whether it was Facebook or, but, or text or whatever, but just thank you, thank you to all of you guys and really appreciate it.
Jerry's out, it's still, you're the oldest.
I'm still the oldest and I, you know, I'm, as long as I'm here, I hope I am the oldest, you know? Because if I'm not, there's a problem.
Overe H.G., H.G. will take over. I don't, I don't think you said, but you told me this earlier, there was over ninety people that was able to make it out to your house for that celebration, so that was, it was fun, happy birthday.
Thank you.
You done? You done?
I'm done.
Okay. Yeah, I've got a slide, it's already up there. We talked about this earlier when Evan came and presented, but the Blue Angels are making their return to Smyrna in just a few weeks. The Blues will be, be in town on June 7th and 8th. Day passes and tickets for the Airshow Network are available at greattennesseairshow.com. Tickets are sold only online, so make sure if you want to come that you get online and get those tickets. Evan said tickets are going quickly, so better move briskly, you might miss out, but even if you miss out, they can pretty much be seen everywhere in Smyrna, so they'll be here in just a few weeks. Couple of things that I've got, National Police Week, thanks Dave for highlighting that, Chief, make sure all of your guys know how much we appreciate them. I think they already know that, but I just want to make it, make it known again that we really appreciate what they're doing. Now, my, my son is now on his own, in his own car in Metro, he's finished all of his training, and so he is on the streets doing, doing that work as well, so appreciate you guys. Welcome, Chief, thank you for showing up tonight and coming to the part, to the employee appreciation. It's those kind of things that kind of reiterate the choice that Dave's made and tells us we've got the right guy, so thank you. The employee appreciation, cookout and service awards was great, that, that's the first time we've kind of done it that way. I liked having that kind of separated from the Christmas luncheon and making it more special or directed towards those employees, so I really liked that, Dave, thanks for that. I, I was not a fan initially, because I just saw it as another meeting I got to attend or another event, but I got to eat the buffet twice, so it worked out good, so I get to eat it for two, so it worked out good. Jeff, thank you for another great year, good job for everything you're doing for the town and everything you do for us individually, we really appreciate it, thank you. And then, lastly, we had, at Smyrna Adult Softball, we had a, one of our, one of our own pass away this past week, Don Smith has played in our league, I think as long as I've been out there, at least ten years, maybe thirteen or fourteen years, I'm not sure, but he was affectionately known as Hot Dog Don. He, one of the first times I met him, he came up to the concession stand, gave me twenty dollars and said, let me know when it runs out, I'll take two hot dogs. And he came back all day long and ate hot dogs. I quit counting, so I don't know how many he really ate, but he, if, he got the name Hot Dog Don from that. He was, he was also, it was also believed that he had a hot dog roller in his bedroom, so I'm not sure if that's true, but I was told that, so. The hot dogs killed him? No, it did not. He, I, I knew somebody was gonna ask that, but no, he, he had suffered, I believe it was cancer for a couple of years and he'd been in remission and, but he, he's gonna be missed. He was an Antioch graduate from nineteen eighty-five, so he's gonna be missed, that's all.
Raquel brought attention to Representative Stevens as well as Judge Stevens, so thank you and congratulations to them. Jeff, right after your evaluation today, again publicly, I want to say thank you and appreciate everything that you do for us and the town and the citizens of the town and how well you look after us from the legal perspective and as a friend, I appreciate that. Your staff as well, I don't want to forget your staff. Behind every good person is a strong staff. I know Amber used to work back there with you, she can attest to that, so please pass that along to your staff members back there. Jerry, happy birthday once again. Congratulations on seventy great years here and we hope you have at least twenty more. Thank you, Dave, and everybody that put together the cookout, I enjoyed it, I think the employees enjoyed it, and also for the Service Award Banquet that you did. The Fire Department Pennings, Cameron, I know you were there, I saw you the other day and told you I was unable to attend it, I wanted to, but had a conflict, but to those five cadet, those five graduates, we say congratulations, we know your fire department's gonna be proud of them. And, let's see here, Fire and Police Recognitions, Chief Goss, Chief Irvin, we appreciate everybody, every firefighter, every policeman and woman, both, on both, firewomen too, we want to make sure we, they all know how much we appreciate all of them and the work they do, keeping us protected and keeping us safe. Welcome, Dennis and Brian, we appreciate both of you guys being here tonight, we're looking forward to working alongside of you. Another mention was brought up, I think Jerome had the slide on Memorial Day and everybody sort of kind of mentioned that. From a military family, I'm born and I will always honor our veterans and the people that have served our country, and so don't forget that on Memorial Day and what the value is for those people who paid the ultimate sacrifice for our country, they need to be remembered. Special thought tonight for somebody close to the city here, Linda Johnson, she's in Vanderbilt, and thoughts and prayers for her and her family, and to Dottie Simms's family, H.G., you brought that up, that's all I have.
No, you have a slide.
Oh, I do have a slide, I have two slides. This slide, actually, I thought about this one, Steve lives real close to this, so the splash pad at Gregory Mill opens on May 20th and the Splash Town opens on the 24th, come cool off and enjoy your Parks and Rec, you might catch Steve frolicking around in the water if you get there early enough, right? Slide number two, the town of Smyrna's proud to recognize Detective Marcy Gossett. At the recipient, as the recipient of the Hometown Hero Award, this hometown hero began her career at the Smyrna Police Department in nineteen ninety-nine, she was promoted to Field Training Officer in two thousand and five. In two thousand and eight, she earned the Smyrna Police Department Officer of the Year. In two thousand and thirteen, she was promoted to Detective, where she's been a valuable detective for the Smyrna Police Department. When Smyrna Police Department started their Family Crimes Unit, this hometown hero volunteered to take the assignment, and she's done an outstanding job for the victims she has helped. This detective never wavers from her commitment to seek justice for crime victims, especially our youngest and most vulnerable crime victims, so congratulations to Detective Marcy Gossett.
Thanks. Couple of slides that I have. Steve, Jeff and I attended the Twenty-Second Annual Mayor's Prayer Breakfast, and thank you to Greenhouse Ministries for hosting the event. Shane and I had to slip out a little bit early to go speak to the home builders and so, but it was a great event. Thank you to Stewart's Creek Elementary for inviting me out to their school's Career Day, we had a great time and got to engage with all of the third, fourth and fifth graders, they had really great questions, and so thanks for inviting me there. Members of the council and administration were honored to attend the military enlistment celebration at Stewart's Creek High School. I don't know if this is something that every high school does, but I can tell you, it is a wonderful event, and congratulations to all the enlistees and thank you so much, we appreciate you and your family and we wish you much success in your military career and thank you for your service. Congratulations to Raquel on, she was honored at the Faith Awards and this award celebrates individuals who make a meaningful difference in their community through service and faith-driven leadership, and Councilwoman Peebles' dedication impact truly embodies the spirit of this honor, and so we would like to congratulate her on this well-deserved recognition, so congratulations. We would also like to congratulate the two thousand and twenty-five graduates that have a tie here to the town of Smyrna. I'm assuming these are all probably kids or grandkids of our employees, so congratulations to them. We would also like to congratulate Smyrna High School, who graduates on Thursday night, and Stewart's Creek High School, who actually is graduating tonight, and I don't have Lancaster's graduation, do we know, so congratulations to Lancaster as well on, for their graduates. Couple of thank yous for events since we've been together last time that I've been able to attend the YMCA Kids' Day, so thank you to them for having that. Stewart's Creek Band Awards Banquet, what a great event, they honored a gentleman who lived out of Clarksville who made a significant contribution for them to be able to go to the inaugural parade, and he said he just saw a need, he saw it on TV and wanted to be part of it, so enjoyed being able to honor him as well. Also, thanks to the Buddhist temple for having us out for the community breakfast. Dave, Raquel, Todd, John Lear, Jeff Dwyer, am I missing anybody, were able to attend, and so we enjoyed that event, and their New Year's Celebration will be coming up, and if you've not ever been, I would highly recommend you go out, it is a really interesting event. The Mother's Day Event at the Event Center was great, thank you to our staff for making it a wonderful day for all of us. The Rutherford County Roadway Group, we met this week with that, and so excited about that of all of us in the county working together. And then, today, Dave and I attended the Rutherford County or the Twenty-four Corridor with RTA, so another event. Two, shout out Jerry, happy birthday, Patty put so much work, she wanted that day to be special for you and she went above and beyond, as well as your kids too, but I know she was super excited to do that. Also, happy belated birthday to Jeanette Gwen, I think all of us know Ms. Jeanette and she's always taken care of all of us, so happy belated birthday, Jeanette.
Yes.
Sure. Sure.
Mr. Lois Long of Smyrna turned one hundred and two this month.
Wow.
So I want to say happy birthday to her.
I wonder if she's the oldest. I don't know. Huh, interesting.
How about Jerry was? I just hope Jerry has a lot of hope.
So anything else tonight? If there's nothing else, then we're adjourned.